Okay, let us open the meeting, November 12th, 2013, of the Acton School Committee at 6:00. First of all, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
A few more communications.
Okay, then let's move on to number two approval, the minutes of our regular meeting of October 8th, 2013.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as written, of October 8th, 2013.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette, to accept the meeting, the minutes as printed, October 8th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? And now I'll look for an approval of the minutes of the special meeting of November 5th, 2013.
I'll make the motion to accept the November 5th minutes as written.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette, any discussion? All those in favor? Or no? Any comments from the public tonight? No? Okay, then, let's move on to communications and correspondence.
All right, I would like to add two more pieces that have just come up, if you would pass these over.
I think the first, the first one here, time to start over with the school merger law, after all the districts have voted, a lot of it this last week. I don't think this is any news to us, which is, we were ready to start over with it before it began.
I think Acton's a true trendsetter.
And the second one.
I can report on that.
Why don't you go ahead and report on that?
What, we were invited to, there's going to be a public invitation given by Sanford for their construction news, construction update for their high school, some of the ideas they've planned, and how far along they are with the project. And when I visited with their superintendent Dave, he said that at some time, that maybe his board and our board would get together to visit this issue a little bit. But this is a little prelude to that, and I was wondering if the long-range planning, facilities planning committee, and myself, might go to that. I plan to go to that meeting on Tuesday next week, at the same time, down at Sanford, to hear more about what they're talking about with their high school and their new tech side. So I plan to go, and if the committee has any interest, that can come up in the committee portion.
Hey, I don't know how many of you get the Press Herald, but if you do, you saw, you might have seen Bill Nemitz's article on this kid from Sanford that wrote this letter on Acton's day. His own personal story was pretty interesting, how he dropped out of school, and come back into school. This shows, you know, what can happen when kids get their focus back, and really kind of zero out the way they're going. But a very interesting and heartwarming story relating to a letter that he wrote to his grandfather, who is Bill Nemitz. So, I'd like to give us that.
The other piece of communication, what is the professional learning community? I'm going to visit this issue as part of my strategic plan comments. I think you'll find this very interesting. If you haven't had a chance to read it, if you have, I think it's on point for things that we hope to be doing soon. We already are going to try.
Okay. Any other communications or correspondence added?
That's it for me.
Then let's move on to superintendent's report.
I was notified by the town government that I was to form a letter, or formulate a letter, and give it to them for their town report, and the letter had to be in by 15th. And so, in conjunction with preparing for this meeting tonight, and some things I put on the website, as far as activities that we're involved with right now, I reiterated in the superintendent's report what has been going on, say, on my watch since I came to work. So I'm going to read this, it's quite quick, but it's very specific to tonight's meeting. Superintendent's report for 11, 12, 13 board meeting. The following report consists primarily of the preparation of the superintendent's report as provided to the Acton Town Hall in selectment for inclusion in the Acton Town Annual Report, which had a deadline of 11:15 13. Upon accepting the role as the new part-time Acton School Department Superintendent in August 2013, the Acton School Committee challenged me with the project of finalizing the school's vision and setting a strategic plan in motion. I met with all those administrators, teachers, parents, and school committee members who contributed to the recent vision development efforts, and accepted the responsibility that would extend their vision into a workable strategic plan. I was also presented with vacancies in both the Acton School Central Office, business, and personnel positions, but was fortunate to recruit and train two talented new employees who were firmly in place in late September. To establish a strategic plan, I worked closely with the Acton School teachers and administrators as they developed SMART goals, SMART meaning specific, measurable, attainable, results-based, and time-bound. The SMART goals allow the school to split the mission and vision into manageable and measurable pieces. At the school committee meeting on Tuesday, November 12th, I presented the accumulated efforts and good works of all those who helped develop the strategic plan, and showed those in attendance at the meeting the school's targets and timetables. The desired outcome of all of the strategic planning efforts is the advancement of our students educationally, physically, and emotionally, and the continuous improvement of how we deliver the knowledge and maturity to our students. If we expect our community of learners to move forward, we as educators and parents must be part of the changes necessary to fuel that growth. I have enjoyed learning about the strengths and successes of the Acton School, and have seen firsthand the dedication of all the school department employees and the school committee members, and the positive contributions from the parent-teacher group. I also applaud the administrators for their close scrutiny of all the financial aspects of this school department, and I'm confident that the residents and property owners are receiving an excellent value for their hard-earned tax dollars, educationally yours, can't alter. So that was the prelude to the next section that we'll go into at your request, which will be the strategic plan, monitoring progress.
Well, that's right next on the list, so why don't we just move right into that?
Okay. We have a video presentation, it is a PowerPoint
Well, while we're waiting, why don't we keep on moving along here, and we'll come right back to it. How's that? Moving along with our agenda. Which are our other administrative reports. Tricia?
Okay.
Oops, there it is.
Oh, all right. Well, there might be a delay from before you walk out the door. Well, let's go to the next slide, see if it is working. It's on the screen. Is it working? I'll let you decide. Oh, well. Probably won't work on that. Okay, if you want another five minutes, Bill. The administrative reports do dovetail with this presentation, so you only want, there is one presentation that you did not receive, and that's the one from Andy, and that's because I lost it, and I was sending you things electronically. I meant to send you that as well. If it takes a while, the preference will be that I start with a very, I wouldn't say lengthy, but very positive, and I would say very important to the school, plan that is being suggested by Kim. So I would like to have Kim go first with one of her strategic goals. Are you ready? Okay, all right, we'll go back. Sorry about that. I have to be flexible. I'm sorry. Let me.
We flex.
I have to be flexible. Okay. So tonight we're presenting the, our version of the Acton School strategic plan. So if you go to slide two, this is the vision that we discussed briefly, or it was in the board packet a month ago, I believe. But the question came about this vision, did we actually approve it? So, at the end of this board meeting, there is a recommendation from me to either approve the whole strategic plan or table it and have us adjust it a little, which could happen. But if we do nothing else from this strategic plan, I would like to have us approve, I would recommend that we approve the vision tonight, because the vision is the key to everything that we do in the strategic plan. So, there are some very future types of things in the vision, and that's what a vision should be. Vision is not the past, the vision's in the future. And one of the things that we're going to talk about quite a bit in the strategic plan is, if you look at the learning experience here, this is, not that every, all four paragraphs aren't really important, but this one is particularly telling. If we read this, it says, "Learning is different for individual students in terms of pace, learning style, and interest. Therefore, students will actively participate in creating and revising their own learning plans." Now, what that, what we're saying is, we want to develop a professional learning community, and when I get to this slide in a second, that, that's one of the things that dovetails so closely with a quantum leap sort of change, or things that are different today than, not just in this district, but other districts. So after we, if anyone has any questions on the vision, I would ask you to let me go to the next slide. If you have no further questions.
Any questions?
You can talk about it later, but. Okay. All right, so we'll go to the next slide. What I, what we did, and as I mentioned in my preamble, is that we broke the vision up into seven strategic goal plans, seven SMART goals. First one, learners will reach or exceed the school, state, and national standards due to the combined efforts of those that deliver and manage the curriculum and the assessments. What we're saying is, nothing can happen until we develop a more updated curriculum, and that we learn from the assessments, the tests that are being given. So this one, each one of these has goals behind it. So the goal, for this one, the SMART goal, is one that I have given the board, and this goal is not just my administrative goal, but it's a community goal, and it's a school board goal. So what we're suggesting is, as I said, learners reach or exceed the school's, state, and national standards due to the combined efforts of those that deliver and manage the curriculum and assessment. So we have objectives, we have activities, and we say, who is accountable? We're all accountable. As an example, the, in the activities, evaluating and coaching the teachers, evaluating and coaching the administrators, and challenging and evaluating the superintendent. So who is accountable for this change in the way we deliver education? We're all accountable. School committee, superintendent, the principal, special editor. So this is one where, as it says, we're going to be having a number of meetings, and we're going to collect and analyze the assessment data. We'll do presentations at school committee meetings. Each month, when we have our section on strategic plan, we'll have updates on each one of them. Or if there is no change in one of them, we may not update that, but we'll give you progress. So if we go to the next slide, and that's where we're talking about, what is a professional learning community? We're going to create and maintain an efficient and effective organization that fully supports the mission and the vision. And I think the couple of them really lead items in this article are the big ideas that are mentioned on page eight, page nine, and page 10. And if I just read a couple of things here. The professional learning community model flows from the assumption that the core mission of formal education is not simply to ensure that students are taught, but to ensure that they learn. This simple shift from a focus on teaching to a focus on learning has profound implications for schools. The next big idea, culture of collaboration. Educators who are building a professional learning community recognize that they must work together to achieve their collective purpose of learning for all. Therefore, they create structures to promote a collaborative culture. This is a teamwork effort. It can't be done by one teacher, it has to be done by all teachers and administrators. And big idea number three, focus on results. Professional learning communities judge their effectiveness on the basis of results. Working together to improve student achievement becomes the routine work of everyone in the school. So, one other, one other very important comment is this bold one here, bold in print. Collaborative teacher conversations must quickly move from beyond what are we expected to teach, to how will we know when each student has learned? Again, quantum shift. And in order to facilitate professional learning community, Tricia and I, your principal and I, have been, have had a nice long phone visit with the author of these two books, Giselle Martin-Kenee. She's someone that I worked with in Matata Kachak Schools when we identified this as a new book back in 2003. And this was the book that you used as the bible. And since then, she has another book, Changing the Way You Teach, Improving the Way Students Learn. So we bought a number of copies of both books, and they're going to be helpful to us as we work with the teachers and the other administrators to develop the new method. Okay, the next role is, develop the professional competency of all staff members consistent with the school's strategic plan. Now, evaluations are one of the, one of the things that, as we look at how we're going to improve the competency, we need to do some, some major activity in finding out just how other districts are doing this too. Because the state is telling us that we have to do a better job of evaluating teachers, but evaluating the teachers must be consistent with our strategic plan. So, yes, we're going to put together a new evaluations manual with the help of the teachers as well, and then we're going to have observation forms that are made consistent with the strategic plan, with recommended improvements, and then a final product accepted and printed. So it's a new bible for the way that we evaluate, and it will be tied to, as we said, our strategic goals. Number four, there are a few of us that look a little more like grandparents, and that's fine too. But what I'm saying with this is, our technology, we must develop and maintain cutting-edge technology and two-way communications that connect and empower all stakeholders in the Acton School Committee. It isn't just what we're doing for students, it's not just what we're doing for administrators, it's not just what we're doing for our teachers. It's what we're doing for the whole community so that any age or any person can help facilitate the learning that is so important. So, I picture myself with my grandchildren in my other role, except I haven't grown that roto yet. All right, that's a, that's a goal that will be more mine than Mr. Corey's, and of course, he has, each one of these goals that we've mentioned has backup roles from our administrators, and backup roles from teachers. So, the three of us that I've put accountable for the technology changes are myself, the principal, and the technology director, and we will be researching and determining what are the best methods to increase the communication and make all members of the community feel that they are more involved, whether it be a more interactive report card, whether it be any kind of new training methods that we use. And so that's a, that's an exciting part of our change that we hope to make. Now, goal five, this is a goal that Mr. Grazer and I have, and the long-range committee has. Provide and maintain appropriate space in order to meet the educational needs of all the students while providing effective operation of school facilities. We have a very nice school plant here, well taken care of, well designed, and well-used, but are there other things that we could do better if we had some special rooms for special needs students, or activities that require a little extra space? Is it, does it mean adding? Does it mean taking some walls down? We need to look at what our future is. If we're not looking at more students, but we're looking at students with more needs, how does this building, how is it developed in such a way that it will be more adaptable and more helpful to the education of the future? So, Mr. Grazer and myself and the committee, we want to establish the needs, and we want to set the timelines, and if there's funding necessary, look at where that would be. We need to look at the vendors and the project managers, and we want to manage these projects to completion, and then if there's any new, new facility things that need new training in systems and facilities, we will do that. So, we're looking forward to finding out what the rest of the school wants us to do to make their facility more adaptable and fill in the needs that aren't tomorrow, not just today. Where the rubber hits the road is goal six. And no matter what we would like to do, we have to do it within the limits of what we can pay, or what we can encourage the voters to pay. So, goal six, manage all fiscal aspects of the school so that the best education can be provided within the limits of the voter's ability to pay for the educational and facility services. There's, there's a situation that will always be a constant need versus capabilities, and we certainly will work on that and defend anything that the voters see that may change. I'm not saying we want to change the tax rates, but we just need to be 21st century and beyond in how we educate, so sometimes money's necessary. So, goal seven, we got our last one. Is providing students with a variety of sports, extracurricular, intellectually challenging, and life skill activities, and to ensure the student's overall experience is positive and rewarding. This is, this is one of the things that can separate us from other schools. When other schools are dropping middle school sports, or other schools are not looking seriously at the potential talented capabilities that we need to pursue, we hope to be a beacon in showing that what we can do. Now, of interest tonight is, is a presentation a little bit later from Melinda, who's going to show us the gifted and talented program that she just initiated, which we have a video. So, the, this goal that we've set, this final goal, is not just myself and Tracy Scully, it's myself, because sports, certainly Tracy is the athletic director, but it's the whole building, because, as we say, extracurricular, intellectually challenging, and life skill activities. So that's, that's a very strong goal that we will be working on. So, I can't say one goal is needed more than another, but we feel that those seven fairly and productively take the vision which we have looked at before, and turn it into an active project and mission, a goal, shall we say, that can be watched along the way, can be adjusted if necessary, but will, not in a few months, but within the span of a year to a year and a half, if we do our job as well, we will have the goals that we've set, or we'll adjust it to goals a little bit based on things that happen. So we're very excited about the strides we've made so far to structure this and to bring our school above and beyond the productivity or the achievements that it's had over. So, are there any questions that you might have
I'm really, I'm really happy to see it black and white, and to see that we're actually moving forward with it now. It is just a vision that's out there someplace, something we're thinking about, but something that we're actually doing. That's what we've been waiting hours and hours to see. Something really kicked into action here, and it's nice to see some, some action, some definite steps being taken in that direction.
I like these goal-planning templates. Where'd you get them?
From the past.
Very nice. I liked them. Put it down up here.
It's unfortunate that we have one of our board members missing, a board member who is extremely capable in this arena. And to say that he's excited about this opportunity is a true understatement, because he confided in me, and I don't think you'll mind me saying this, that he is in the middle of writing a book for us. I mentioned these two books, but in the near future, hopefully, there'll be one that says Kevin Perks at the bottom, and it will be very much about the professional learning communities, and what he's learned that can be, not only the success stories that are written in here, but the other things that he's seen that are much more current. So, I look forward, if you don't mind, he has asked me if he can meet with me next week, to sort of not lose the time that he would have had tonight. And that if we both feel, and I think we do, that there could be a little tweaking of some of the wording, or is there some, have we missed anything? He would like a little longer time, he said to me, I'll go to digest it all. And I said that we could meet next Tuesday, or Thursday, be the one, at his convenience, for him to work a little more closely with this. Again, he wasn't saying that he was uncomfortable anyway with it, but he just wanted a little more time to absorb it.
He sent the whole board an email, I think you've come to it, too. He says that he thinks the plan is, he really likes it, but he also mentioned that if we could possibly table it until he meets with you.
Yes.
I feel comfortable with, because Kevin is, like you said, this is his deal.
I did mention that to him. I said that it's a lot to absorb for all of us, not just for, remember, it's not just for the administration. And I said, feel free to recommend a slight delay, because we're on the right track. We don't have to try to think we can complete everything in the next two weeks. Meaning, I mean, yes, maybe complete for the next board meeting the final draft of the seven goals, yes. But, or maybe this is an eighth that we missed. But as far as things we've set in motion, that won't delay us, because we have already jumped into this with both feet.
Great. Any others have any comments? I'd like to get Kevin's input.
Yes. Right. I'm pleased that he has, he'll have the time next week to listen.
Okay.
So now we can go to the administrative reports. And one of the things I didn't mention with respect to the, the one here that's the business law, manage all physical aspects. Some of the goals that Kim and I have are coming to fruition faster than other goals, because we just need it so badly.
Necessity?
Necessity is another dimension. So I would like to let Kim lead off with the products of her really strong commitment to the school so quickly into her career with us, and how it's been a gel so well for everyone, not just my central office. So, Kim?
Since our last meeting, it was very apparent that you guys were looking forward to moving forward with a new accounting system, and the main parts were to make sure we had a specific fund accounting that the size school handled. There are a lot of softwares out there. I actually gone through eight of them. The bulk of them all had massive installation charges, like $10,000 relation. The bulk of them all had massive installation charges, like $10,000 relation charge with a general ledger, $10,000 per year. So, that really made it, well, that eliminated six right off the bat. So, that was, so we also knew that we needed to say within a certain financial requirement. Ken and I had gone to Sanford, we had looked at their system with Tyler Technology, which you have a summary at Tyler's. Tyler's is hardware is here. We would have to provide our own hardware, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Very expensive in the bottom line, the first year is $32,000. The other one that I'm actually recommending is Blackboard. Blackboard is different because it's in the cloud. So, we don't have the cost of playing out hardware, okay, because it's a whole program and everything is got in Georgia. And I've been to their facility. It's huge. And everybody that works there is 40 and under. It's a perfect accounting software.
I said, what are you saying? Forty and under?
Anybody on the board get into that category?
And I'm honestly, that's exactly how I felt when I got there, but they're very strong in hiring. There's some major technical colleges right there in Georgia and they hire all, everybody that's got circumspheres, they're the first ones that got, they get hired there. And these, these guys are smart, girls, they're guys are smart. It's very, and they are constantly cross-training everybody, everybody's moving up. And, and I don't mean that in a derogatory way as far as age or anything, but I'm just saying that they're, that company's been around for over 30 years and it's a really strong group. They handle a lot of school accounting softwares, except me for the state one, which Tyler does have the bulk of. The big advantage with Blackboard is, like I said, with the accounting in the cloud, it allows, I can have as many users as I want, I just set them up, only I can only have two on the system at the same time. But that will allow, we have folks in the front office that are going to just input purchasing information and wait for their administrators to get approval. They all can be done on their Macs or their PCs, so it doesn't have to be, you know, specifically on the computer, you know. It's basically, I've done an installation with Blackboard in the last year and a half. We used it at Blackboard and it's like they, I did actually meet with Bill Hall today and talked to him, he's our arbiter. Can't wait for us to actually move on to another system as well.
From our HHS.
Yes.
Yes.
In fact, he said he had recommended it quite often and just been, so the software, Blackboard is basically, we charge about $6,800, I think I have, $6,800 a year. And that's, it's basically a three-year commitment, but that's what our annual fee will be. It's a $6,800. And that will give us everything that we need to do all of our funding. And I did talk quite extensively to Bill as far as our setup, as far as our budget setup. It's through him that I realized that actually the software we have is not a good fund accounting software. And I wondered because I questioned, that's so many due to to firm accounts. And I said, well, because it's not really set up as a fund accounting, you can't separate out your grants from the regular programs, so that's why they have all these due to to firms and not as that. Okay. So, I just, I believe this is financially responsible for the kind of activity and it's allowing us to use a very in-depth, powerful program without having to take on the costs like I guess we would if we were with Tyler Technologies. Both of them are almost.
So, excuse me, why are we paying none of that right now for their services?
So far this year, we spent $4,300, just for the annual fee. And then we, because we were new coming through the door, we spent $2,200 upfront just to help train us. So, we've spent.
You've spent this, you've spent this much already? And so it's going to be, it's not going to be any more expensive than what we have just in the provision.
It's also, if it's cloud-based, you don't have to worry about like a computer crashing and losing the information.
Like this evening.
Like today? Oh, Lord.
We were, we were moving the computer. All I did was shut it off, pick it up, move it, put it down, plug it in, when it turned on. So, I had to finagle with it till I got it going again.
Finagling.
Finagle with it.
This is what finagling meant.
Yeah.
Hit it a couple times.
All right. So, backup is not a problem with the system, obviously.
No, and the other, the really strong part of it as well is when you're calling support and you're trying to figure out how something, you know, how you want me to set this up, they can actually see everything.
Okay.
So, they can see exactly what you're doing, they will help you move.
Help you move.
Yes. And I've worked a lot with them in support and.
Well, it's nice to get into the 21st century with us.
Right. And it's, and thank you for all the work you've done, working at it.
I hope to make my job easier.
All of our jobs.
I, I see no reason why at this time we can't hesitate a motion if we want to approve.
I'll make a motion to accept financial edge by Blackboard as recommended by Kim. Should I say price? For the annual fee is $6,820 and the optional online training for $1,099.
With the optional training too, it doesn't have to be every year.
Right. So, this first year we'll get it and then we'll see if we need it.
Yeah.
Do you have a second?
Do you have a second?
So, we're years in when we close out our HHS, this won't, this won't be a problem.
No, in fact, what I'd like to really, and it'll be really pushing up, is try to get it up and running by Jay Mark first, so that way the payroll, I'll end on those and then start with a new one. And Bill, Paul, and I, just call me before him, oh, we started implementing the GL and we'll make sure we got a really clean GL balance sheet to start with, so that way it'll come over and it will just slide everywhere.
Thanks for bringing that forward. The board would definitely notice, you know, type of stuff, plus.
But it makes so much sense that there's something out there cloud-based, I mean.
Well, that's, and even Tyler took, they, they started, they're starting to look at it, okay, because their system that they have right now, this is why I was kind of Larry Bahama with Tyler, because their software is, it's been around for quite a while too. They're getting ready to change it. So, they're going to say, well, you can start with this one.
No, you buy it.
You can buy it, but when we change over to the other one, you don't have to pay for the upgrade to go that way. And, and where they have things in beta testing and that type of stuff, I was like, I don't want to be the guinea pig. I just want something that's solid. I want, you know, to be comfortable with the information that I'm putting in and getting out is accurate, so.
Is not a doubt or aware that there's going to, might be a possible change as it gets to them? They don't know yet.
Yeah, they do.
I, I, well, I don't, I don't know if they watch it or not, but my concern is I, I need them to stay. I need to, to make it through to the end of the year, so.
Yeah.
I mean, for me to call up them and say, oh, by the way, we're going to leave, we're going to have a couple months.
They are very aggressive when they find out. They are tough ones.
And I, it's, it's hard to, this is hard just working with this.
We'll just kind of leave that up to you to handle that.
She might get some help in being tough.
Jim, can you talk to them?
Any further, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Thank you very much. And there are a couple of other things that Kim has that she wants to share with you. She had half the meeting by herself, but it's all good.
The other thing, have they got all their papers?
Yeah.
This is basically, I sorted all these by the articles, the way that you guys have put it on. The report that I had seen, because somebody said, oh, this is what they want every night. Well, I tried to recreate that work, I just, and it made no sense to me, it really didn't. And I wanted something that, when I look at it, I know that this is this article, this is what we've appropriated, this is what we have spent, this is what we have left. The other thing I was going to add on to this is the percentages on the right. So, that way, when I know that I'm halfway through, I know I should get 50%, if something's really off that number, I'll be looking at it anyway. And so I, I did them by all 12 articles, so that way, and I will be doing projections out for like all the salads and apparel to make sure that I have enough to constantly not go under your total for each article, so. I just want to know, this is a format that works for you guys.
This is a great format. Is this something you just developed yourself? You put this together yourself? Because this doesn't look like anything that we ever got printed off, no, but that. Was this something you put together yourself?
Yes. I take the raw data from a master and then I export it out into a tab file. I take that tab file and I compare it over to an Excel worksheet and then I have my data in that. And then from there, I've created pivot tables for every article. So, alls I have to do now is I just upload new master data into the file, that original file, and then refresh all of them in a, in a database.
That's great. Yeah, this is, this is the perfect way to see what's happening there. Yeah, this is great. I, when I was looking at this, I, when I got my packet, I was looking at it and I said, this has to be something that she's developed on her own, because this isn't anything that we've seen, but this is the clearest way to understand where we are in the budget, where we are in each area, and if, if we're finding something is more expensive than we thought it was going to be or less, I mean, this is a very clear way to see what's happening within the budget process. And it will be very helpful too, as we get into the budget development, I think it would be good to be able to look at this and see just where our needs have shown up in here. Very easy to see. Thank you very much for doing that.
And the last thing, she won't comment on that, but she's going to be my right-hand person to help with the whole budget procedure. And we're, one of the things that we did, we put in our board back for your approval, and I think we're going to call too, is that when we get to that, that's the timeline for meetings and how we'll make this all happen in a, hopefully, a very transparent and productive way. But having much better data to work with this early on is going to be much better.
Did you see this?
Yeah.
No, he hasn't seen that.
The one thing, the thing you just talked about now, the budget timeline.
Thank you.
I want to change, change our agenda a little bit and allow, we're going to come in and do what she's going to do first before.
Maybe it won't have to massage us so much this year.
It's a good time to hear. We said that sometimes we might want to be flexible.
I'm going to, I'm going to hesitate a motion to kind of adjust our agenda a little bit so that, because we do have a presentation and I think there are small bodies waiting for this presentation to be over with, and now they are here over the school. So, at this time, we'll turn it over to Melinda, who's our gifted and talented teacher.
Hi. Well, thank you all for having me here today. It's been a pleasure to listen to what's going on from right here. So, I'm excited. I'm also very excited to tell you about what we've been doing in the second grade classroom. We have taken kind of what you've been talking about tonight, about taking to the next level and doing service learning and taking what we're learning in the classroom and how we can affect the community. So, what we did was we took some water, a water unit and we expanded on it and how these little guys can help change the world. We started the whole year with, it just takes one person to make a difference. Play the video. It should speak for itself. So, as you saw there, we took the water cycle unit that kids mostly learn about at school and we took it that next step. We took it to how does the pollution happen, what makes the pollution and what takes it down into the lake, since we've got lots of lakes here too. And so they built their model, brought a sample here. They worked in teams, which I love working in teams. So, they worked in teams and then they had to build a town of resources and then. And then we use pollution, and they had different like pot popovits and orange gelatin for fertilizer and all that stuff. They sprinkled it all over their town, and then they rained on it with their squirt gun, and they watched it wash down into the lake at the bottom. And they were all aghast. So then we put up barriers, and they put up their sponges as walls and the scrubbies as grass. And then they did it again, and they noticed that it helped. So, you know, trying to be so erogenous. And meanwhile, Mrs. Damaris and I, and a few other teachers, Gail and Mrs. Pudnup and Mrs. Young, we were all drinking, supposedly only drinking water for two weeks to show that we were giving up our... Whatever we were giving up, we were donating. So we did that, and we raised over a hundred dollars to send off to countries like Uganda or America that they don't have clean drinking water. The kids were excited to think that they could help other children.
Awesome. It's fun to get into the classrooms, isn't it? Okay, let's go back to our administrative reports now. The administrator's still here and ready for the report. You want to go first? No? Since you're going to be leaving? Do you have to leave? Oh, you don't have to leave. Okay. Oh, it was Paul that had to leave. Okay. Principal, this is Principal. Are there any things that you'd like to highlight from your report tonight?
Um, I really have some things that come under the data. So if nobody has any specific questions for me.
Okay.
I do want to point out, before our next school board meeting, at the bottom of my report, I have the upcoming things. On the seventh of December, this kind of aligns the way it does, that our school board meeting is the tenth. On the seventh of December, PTG is holding a Polar Express night. It's going to be here, and kids are invited to wear pajamas and enjoy hot chocolate and bells and such. I will be here that night. In pajamas is the threat. They have adult-sized feety pajamas, and I'm wondering, maybe I could use it somehow to the children's advantage to embarrass myself and show up in feety pajamas. I will be here.
Also, the snuggie.
Yes, the snuggie, maybe that'd be a little less embarrassing. As someone who cannot stand the thought of wearing pajamas in public, it would be quite a leap for me, but anything for the kids. So I'm really excited, but that didn't make it on it because I really just looked at November, and then I realized after this, after the PTG meeting, that was right before our very next meeting. So children, grandchildren are encouraged to come and enjoy that night. Polar Express is just a great kids' experience.
Will we make a little train ourselves and have them sit in cars?
You didn't hear that, did you?
So the rest I'll talk about under the data.
Okay.
The reason I mention that, my last school district, it was a wonderful exercise for the elementary schools. What they did for a train was they did the wall as the train. The students sat in chairs in the hallway, but they felt they were in the train because the side of the train, it was on their left and on their right, whatever they were in. The hallway was the train.
Nice.
Okay. How about Joy at the special ed?
No, I guess I would like to highlight that we are going to undergo a program and fiscal audit. We were notified in October, and Kim and I have the pleasure of doing a webinar regarding the fiscal aspect of it. And I just want to thank Kim for all of her work with me on this, and also on local entitlement, because it's difficult for me. I don't know the fiscal aspect of it, it's not my job to do that, so I depended on Kim, which is, done a great job. Just want to say that. So how the fiscal and program audit goes is in December, we submit twenty percent of our student population, submit twenty percent of fiscal monitoring piece. In other words, we monitor twenty percent. We have to fill out a form, send it into the department event, and then we also have to fill out some forms regarding the fiscal monitoring. And in talking with the state, the fiscal monitoring, they said we look really great. They just don't know about the programming yet, because they haven't seen anything. I feel confident, they come in March to actually do an onsite visit. So we're preparing for that, although I think, as I said, we're in pretty good shape for that. Right, labeling, the computer's mics are already on that, he's given me a list, so we just have to label what he's actually provided to me. And then the local entitlement, we're working on the year-end report, and also the fiscal year 2014, that local entitlement application will be, I believe, also in November fifteenth. So not having, just not having the actual figures until Kim provided them, and has... I should say, it's just, it's going to go very well. I have confidence. And then, oh, programming. We're working on, you know, one of my goals, or my SMART goals, is really to improve the service delivery of all special ed students. I mean, that's an ongoing, continuous project for us, we're always doing that. At this juncture, we have identified around sixteen students who are, have some challenges in the arena of emotion and behavior. So we're improving our behavior plans using our school psychologist and also a behavior specialist that we're consulting with, to make those plans very specific in the event, particularly if we have, should have a crisis. So they'll be scripted, and everyone in the building who interacts with that child will know how to approach the child, so that we're not escalating behavior, we're keeping them calm, and they're actually, you know, able to go right back in the classroom if they do have an issue, and they can get their education in the regular classroom. And I think that's about all we have to report today.
So the students you're talking about are mainstream students?
Yes, all of our students at this point are, with the exception of a couple of students who pulled up for language arts and math, we're really moving forward with that full inclusion.
Anybody have any questions, Joy? Good, sounds very good, thank you. Technology?
All right, I'll just go down mine briefly. The first thing on my list is the new website design I've been working on. I've been trying to align it with the Sanford School site, I have it up there on the projector. That is the overall design scheme I'm working with. It matches the Sanford School website. As far as design scheme goes, it looks quite similar to their site, but blue. These links up here can be modified, I just threw up there for placeholder. Modules would be a calendar, latest news article, et cetera, whatever you want. I plan on having some sort of thing like this, with maybe some pictures or highlighted events that are going on or news. So that's one project. The Common Core standards are in Infinity Campus for fourth and fifth grade for language arts and math. We're testing them for grading purposes. So I'm working with the fourth, fifth grade, well, fifth grade teachers on Common Core standards and report card implementation. I was anticipating a new server hardware equipment last week, but I finally got in touch with them, and they said that there was some malfunctioning happening in it, so they're testing more hardware, and they'll get it to me as soon as they have a dependable unit put together. So I didn't get a chance to migrate our servers over to the new hardware. And I've been working with technology integration into the curriculum. And I would like to give an honorable mention for Gail Boivier, for her hard work as a Net Tech III, running the computer lab for the past four or five years. She's taken on the role of basically a classroom teacher in that lab, teaching lessons and... I just, she's going above and beyond to make sure this program works, and I'm just, I'm proud of her, and I commend her for her hard work and dedication to the school.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
I was amazed by Mike.
I tried.
Because I'm so limited.
Is that what you say your goal is, to amaze?
Yeah, just him, though. I don't want to set my bar too high.
I agree with Gil Boivier, too.
Facilities.
I'll just highlight a few things on the report. One of the things that was done in October was the replacement of one of the two air-conditioning units in the computer lab. The existing units are approximately twenty years old. One of them kind of reached the point where it was cost-effective to replace the unit in its entirety. When long-term met tonight, we discussed budgeting for replacement of the other unit in the upcoming year. It's just the right, it's the right thing to do. It's the type of refrigerant that they're using in the new units versus the old units. The old refrigerant is something that they're phasing out, they're phasing in a new type of refrigerant. Pots, all the stuff, it all just, it's cost-effective to replace the unit, so that's something that we discussed. I've been doing a lot of things to get ready for the winter months. The athletic fields have been winterized and fertilized. I've been going through all of the power equipment, and got my ice snow products delivered today, my sand here, I'm ready for snow, unfortunately. Our quarterly water sample was taken today. Annual inspection and certification of our boilers has been done this month. And currently, I am doing a small renovation project in the central office to provide better use of the existing space. Other than that, that's about it.
I'd like to make a comment to add to that. I was watching Jim Wood with the floor machine, which was going down the hallway during a school class day where there were doors open, and it was so quiet that it didn't create any distraction from the students. He can do the floors even when students are there, even if the doors are shut. So the new machine that is working out well for us is so quiet that I hardly know what's going on, so it's a good thing for, the students aren't bothered by it, yet we can be clean during the day. Thank you, thanks.
Anybody have any questions or comments, Brady? Let's move on then to student data, and... Go back to brushing.
When you got here tonight, I passed out a stapled packet. The top page says exit slip. So along with student data, I wanted also the school board to know that I was collecting staff data. So there's a lot of self-assessment and staff surveys being done to assess where they are in their abilities, in their growth and learning. So that I'm getting baseline informations, as well as we will be doing progress monitoring with the staff and the expectations I have for improving instruction. So what you have is an exit slip, which is usually something I give up to them, if not in hard copy, at least orally given, and then at other staff meetings, the answers of the exit slip, the direction they're going to do, is on an index card that I collect. So I want you to see some of the things we're doing. Because of some work through Joy, we had a behavior specialist come in, and she's doing some advisory work to us, and she shared with me this classroom behavior support plan of self-assessment. So I had all the teachers last Wednesday fill out the assessment anonymously. I am now collecting that data, and I will be able to report out where they feel they are at this point. But I can also use the same piece to walk around and observe in their classroom for these things, which she said, the specialist said, you know, are really helpful for kids, especially because they're so inclusive here. We want to know, what can we be doing as a regular daily practice of supporting students? So again, the very top thing, just very simple, are the school-wide rules posted in your classroom? Are your classroom behavior expectations stated positively? So the teachers could assess themselves, also then see where we want them to go, and I also can use the same tool to see what progress has made. So the expectation is, the baseline would be the lowest percentage of compliance, and we'd move up from there. Next in your packet is a sample, we spoke of it, it's got some graphs on it, maybe out of order, but... We've got Kristin Gallipault working with me as our instructional strategist. So again, I know this is Kevin's alley for sure. So you will be getting lots of information on the past three years of the kneecap data, the NWA, things like that. And so you'll be getting a whole report, and some of what we learned from that report coming up. So I wanted you to know that this was a progress. This is what's happening. And right now, we're up to dozens of pages, Kristin's really been, you know, accessing the assessment. We are compiling common assessments that are not necessarily standardized tests, but let's say there's a writing assignment that all seventh graders have to do. So that is being also compiled in a central location. So we will have digital as well as paper copies of all assessments given, K through eight, that are done at the classroom level, grade lines across, all subjects, as well as the standardized testing. So I hadn't shown you yet, and I felt like, hey, they need to see that this is where we're headed, because this is the kind of information you're going to get. And as Ken had mentioned, with the PLCs, the professional learning community, one of the pieces of a professional learning community is being able to articulate and discuss the appropriateness and the effectiveness of these assessments. So it's supposed to drive instruction. So not just the NWA's and kneecaps, but even the assessments that teachers deliver, they should be able to bring to their common planning meetings, which are orchestrated in a PLC format, and analyze the effectiveness of the instruction based on the results of the assessment. So you may have a student group in anyone giving here, I'll take English Language Arts as an example, who, maybe eighty-five to ninety percent of the students met what they said were benchmarks at that particular grade level. But the question is, okay, what about those fifteen that maybe didn't get it? We have to then not say, "Oh, I taught it," and move on. But the teachers in those professional learning communities need to practice and become experts at talking about, "Now what? How will we make sure those kids who didn't get it the first round do get it?" And so you will see over the next few years, that kind of assessment data coming back to you as well, that the benchmarks are set, the standards are there, teachers are delivering the instruction. But again, essentially, it comes down to what do the students learn? And so as we move forward with higher quality instruction, always looking to be better, the natural result, the result should be more learning by the students. So there's a direct correlation. In the next section, you see the, there's something on proficiency-based education. Kristin and I are again teaming up a parent conference night to do... Kristen and I are again teaming up a parent conference night to do information, so kind of like a kiosk in the lobby for parents to find out what's going on at school, what the latest talk is, to have samples and information for parents so that they again become more informed to what's happening in education. So this is a, this is a draft and not the final product, but that's what we're planning on doing for the parent conference nights. And then the final chart again is about measuring the teachers. And again, this is a draft that's going to be on a Google, that's becoming a Google doc, so it's going to be a live document. So as I have set forth expectations of growth to the teachers, they can go onto the Google document and check themselves, know that there are due dates and trainings and expectations that they can stay on top of where they are in their progress. So I wanted to share that with you because like you said, it's not just student data that I am tracking, teacher data.
And it's nice to see some of the goals actually down as dates. So it isn't like it's just out there and we get to it, it's let's get it done by a certain time and that's what's going to really move the plan.
Right.
That's good.
And again, the teachers setting their goals this year, as they have to for their evaluation, we have aligned and they're doing the SMART goal template as well. So they can't, they can't also have anything vague. So it's causing very, very fruitful conversations with my staff about measuring their success. When they set a goal, you know, and the objectives that follow, they need to be able to articulate and project exactly what success will mean. They hit that target, what will it look like? How will the school benefit from that goal? And again, it'll align with all the goals that have been set up.
Okay. From Kevin on the airplane. He says something about evaluating teachers. I think we need to discuss what our policy is for evaluating teachers, but you were kind of showing you would use something like this, like you just showed us, and helping to evaluate them also?
Well, the self-evaluation, all of this ties into the same thing. Right now, according to your policy, we had adopted the Charlotte Danielson framework. So each one of these categories fits into one of the four domains. So these are actually the activities, the mini-steps-
Right.
-that have teachers check in with where they are progressing. So at the state level, we are definitely being, we are going to be demanded that our evaluation policy be updated, because student achievement will have to be part of that.
Right, that's what he was asking here.
So we're not there yet. These are all things that regardless of how the evaluation policy changes, these are all good practices that I will be looking for instituted in the classrooms, which even at this point will support one of the four domains, even if it's not a teacher goal. It's still my goal to have the best teachers. So, you know, it all supports that.
So secondly, he says standard-based progress reports. Again, I commend Tricia and the fourth and fifth grade teachers for piloting this. Thank you all for your efforts and leadership on this. Will you read this meeting to collect data about the standard-based progress reports? As a parent and student who received a pilot progress report, I did not receive the survey. Speaking with others, they did not receive the survey as well. Where do we stand on this? My intent here is not to slow down the work, but I have seen numerous districts encounter issues with report cards when parent input is not solicited. Tricia hit the nail on the head when she mentioned the importance of transparency with report cards and progress reports. However, we will not know if we are successful in being transparent and we do not have to plead that with parents.
Fourth grade progress report did not change. That was already in standard style. It was the fifth grade one. So he did not see it because he's not a parent of the fifth grade. Of those that were asked, one, where's one?
Really?
One.
Positive or negative?
Just more of-
What will the report cards look like?
Kind of very, yeah, so one. So that's why the fourth grade parents have the same progress report that they've always had. So there was no change there. It was the fifth grade that needed to change.
Okay, so that's why. And just to go back to the technology report, sorry, I didn't turn this page over. Glad to hear that, this is not me, this is from Kevin, glad to hear that Mike is working on a new website, though I am too. Thanks for doing this, Mike. Like the standards-based report card, would love to see a draft or prototype go out for feedback from students, parents, and the board. Perhaps a prototype can be shown to the PTG at a school board meeting and to some students. And I'll tell him we saw-
Kevin's right there, Kevin.
Right. But he means when you have instead of module and coming soon things in it that maybe-
Functional website, yes.
You could just send it out to us. Does anybody else have any other questions? I'd like to answer all the questions. No, it's very good, keep it coming.
Kristen's doing phenomenal job working with me. I really-
I like things with graphs.
I do. I'm telling you right now, there's, there's over a dozen pages of graphs.
And along with that, you should also look at the wall of success that-
Lisa Doitt.
That Lisa Doitt has put up for reading. Because that's always, that's always really fun to look at, to see the actual progress that the kids have made at each reading level. And it's, it's amazing really, if you look at it and really try to see where they've come from and where they are. She does a great job working with Kelly Warren.
Now, evaluations in the policy has been updated. Would you use, would use this template? How do you, how do you get to that point to decide what's going to fit?
Well, there's a couple of things, that's a great question. We look at other school systems who maybe have already made their decisions to see if what they're modeling is what we're looking for. We have to follow the law that is newly adopted about we must have student achievement as a piece of student evaluation. The struggle which Ken has shared with me as well, even at the superintendent level, is anywhere from ten to seventy percent has been discussed as part of the teacher's overall evaluation. Which, you know, student achievement in our level, it's such a small school, you said seventy percent of student achievement was going to, you know, was seventy percent of your teacher's evaluation was student achievement. If you get a classroom of fourteen or eighteen kids, you can have swing years of crazy and it's not really about the teacher. You've got, so that cumulative data is really important. We can have one kid absent, two new kids move in, and the data is totally thrown off. That's why it's really important to look at the longitudinal data of a grade level, not just one particular class. So we're talking about after the holiday break, a group coming together.
Those are the house crews.
Yeah. So we've got to have some administration and, but we also want teacher input, because we want teacher buy-in. But one of the challenges that I've discussed at this level that needs to also be addressed is, is that the bare minimum, the original, when I came on Boyd as principal four and a half years ago and tried to look at the teacher evaluation system, talked about minimum standards all the time. And I really, I guess I struggled with it, because I don't want to measure teachers on who's, oh, you're breathing and you're not causing any trouble, okay, let's keep you. Basically, I had to prove that they were below minimum standard to do any kind of action plan, which means you're also not, it's not just a negative thing, you're not celebrating those that are far above. It only just measured, did you make it to the minimum? And it reminds me of students tell me, so how are you doing in school? And they'd say, well, I'm passing, like a D was satisfactory somehow. And so I got that same feel. So we started working on it and of course with the challenges we faced at the central office level, you know, it took a stall. But one of the things when we discuss this is we have to talk about what the school board is willing to back and put down in policy for what determines when a teacher needs more guidance, you know? So, and I don't want to wait till they're at minimum. You know, I want to address it sooner and I want to recognize excellence. And that's not yet in our policy. So those are the kind of things that really need to be looked at. We need to not be afraid to recognize excellence. And yet right now, or partially, you know, we're in that partial transition, previous policy did just that. It kind of says, in the long case you're not completely failing, we're done with you. There was no recognition of excellence, there was no way of really celebrating that growth that we're now expecting in education. So it will be something, I don't know the exact deadline. Ken, do you know off the top of your head?
No.
From the state?
From the state. But it's, it's soon and we need to, we need to make good decisions. I am concerned about the student achievement. I do think we have to measure student achievement to determine some of the success. But I don't want to sugar it so bad that, you know, one certain class can make a teacher look like they're the best we've ever seen, or the worst we've ever seen, you know, based on student achievement alone. So we've got to be careful.
So it'll be still like Google, administration and staff and-
Right. To, to, for the initial cooks, we'll come up with a draft. And then we would definitely seek feedback from, you know, invested parties so that we get that whole view. But you can't have too many cooks doing it, it'll be here for years. Oh, wait a minute, I have that. So, thank you for asking.
Let's move on now, is that it? Let's move on to committee reports. Do we everything to go on, term planning committee tonight?
Well, we just met quickly to discuss what would be like budgeted and what would be considered capital. And with the budget season coming up, looks like December third is supposed to have reports in or something, December third? Probably at the next meeting, we'll be able to see what should be more budgeted, because I think five thousand is our mark for things being budgeted, say something that needed to be fixed or, you know, some moving parts, whatever, versus what is capital approval of five. So that's what we have to delineate.
And might I mention again that another advertisement for that meeting next Tuesday at six o'clock, say, I plan to go, is interested?
Maybe last minute if I go, but I'd like to go.
Where is it in Santa Cruz?
It's at the town, it's upstairs in the town hall annex.
In the city hall.
City hall, city hall.
That's right. I have trouble with that.
Next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, six o'clock. It's on the way.
Anything from the policy committee? I know we do have a candidate request in here.
No.
And anything from negotiations committee?
I would have liked to have something, but I don't.
Okay.
Would you suggest, Mary, that the item ten-one would be considered on time cut?
Right, yeah. Okay.
Bottom line, I think we're very close, but we were closer than they were, whether it be last minute absenteeism today, or whatever it happened to be, we thought we were going to-
I thought for sure tonight I'd have it. I've been pushing, I'm the one trying to fast-track it and obviously I failed. So, we're not waiting. I don't think we're bad. Yes, I do. I wanted it tonight. Does any comfort, I've heard noble teachers have worked with that contract for two or three years.
They're, they're not two or three.
So, and they thought we managed to get it one year, so they're packing right back. Just make me feel better.
Okay, then let's move on to unfinished business. And first thing under that is the second reading, final reading of bloodborne pathogens policy called GBGA. And I have a motion to accept this policy for the second reading.
So I'll make a motion to accept the bloodborne pathogens as for it.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette, that we approve bloodborne pathogens policy for the second reading and for adoption. Any further discussion, opposed and favor?
Thank you. I'd like to mention that now that we have, we'll flesh it out in terms of the procedure that goes behind it. I was talking to Carol, our nurse, who had no chance to talk to anybody. I think the three of us need to get together to make sure that our procedure is updated, all three of us are comfortable that it's the best procedure. So that's the next thing. We have the policy, now it's interesting. And the other one, concussion, is we have to, procedure first, and we think we work on the policy. This one, we needed the policy first. So thank you very much for giving us that global analogy.
Okay. Let's look at nine-two. Now the promotion to accept concussion management policy as prejudiced for a second reading and for adoption.
So moved.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette, that we accept concussion management as a, for the second reading and for adoption. Any discussion, all in favor?
Remember we looked at this TARDI policy. It has a little change in the times.
Yeah, you actually had a board action a month ago. I haven't, I didn't bring any TARDI policy back.
We were allowed to amend.
You were allowed to amend.
Right, I know.
I didn't bring it back.
Oh, brand new.
Right, I can, I can do that.
Another piece of paper.
Okay. So TARDI.
Okay. And a new business now, ten-one, to be tabled, Mary?
Tabled.
All right. Ten-two, approval of the budget timeline, budget preparation timeline.
We'll be attached or something.
What it is, Mr. Corvain and-
Point.
Point. I always have to remind you, best of that name, Point. Mr. Point and I and Michelle have compared notes on making sure the dates are correct as it approaches the time for the official telecall activities. So we're in sync.
Okay. And a motion to accept this timeline?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette, that we accept the budget preparation timeline. It has to be adjusted along the way, so be it, but it's good. Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, now we come to ten-three, which is the student use of the late bus. This is the time that we said we would reevaluate the late bus deal. We've got a printout here that shows you the first week, during the first week that it was running on, the week of September sixteenth, there were four kids that used the bus and that was two on, two on Tuesday and two on Wednesday. The next following week, one used it on Tuesday, one used it on Thursday. The following week, nine-thirty, it was used, one student rode it on Monday, one on Tuesday, one on Thursday. In October, the week of October seventh, there were two kids that rode it only on Thursday.
That's all?
That's all. And then October fourteenth, October fourteenth, there was one rode it Tuesday, one rode it Wednesday, one rode it Thursday. October twenty-first, one rode it Tuesday, two rode it Wednesday, one on Thursday. And the week of October twenty-eighth, two kids rode it on Tuesday. So it's apparent that the bus is not getting used very much. So we did put it back in the budget because the kids came to us with their own initiative and, and they had taken a poll and said the kids were going to be riding it and so forth. They thought it was going to be a lifeline for it. I think, I think what happens is the bus leaves like at four o'clock.
I can tell you, well, that's the challenge, is the school gets out at like ten past two. So if you're staying after school, you would need to be picked up by three o'clock. So if you're working with a teacher or you're in activity after school. If you're- If you're a sport person, you need it after four. If you wait till the sport, which is a larger crowd, you then have kids who are unsupervised possibly for as much as two hours, because they could say that they're after school with a teacher, or even go for twenty minutes. And then they're unaccounted for in Sanford until the four o'clock run. So if we, which we, so we switched it to, to address more of the activity kids, but it's just so random for the kids. So coming at, I think it picks up at like two forty-five or something. And so now you can't help the, the sport kids and the activity kids on the same day. Two foot by three o'clock, somewhere around there is what it's, you know, again, one of the acting bus drivers comes here, does the afternoon run, and then goes back there. But it's just one size doesn't fit all. You know, you have kids who really could be picked up about twenty to forty minutes right after school. Those are the kids that stayed and worked with a club or a teacher. And then you've got this long delay later, if they had football practice, that's way too soon. But, you know, when I talked to Doug Roberts at Sanford, it's the supervision issue, because if they're not with a teacher, you know, where are they? And who's responsible? And so like I said, it could be almost two hours of unaccounted for time for students. And so it's not working well for them. I mean, they, you know, they dropped their own late bus, but for our students, we just couldn't get a perfect time, if you would.
And one size doesn't fit all.
It just doesn't.
But there are no late buses at Sanford either, so their only, their help to us was bringing the local costs, it was, it's fifty dollars each trip. And a taxi is about twenty.
I think the, you know, I don't know what the liability issues would be.
We couldn't authorize, those parents could authorize a taxi.
We need a fifty, every fifteen minute shuttle.
Yeah.
And we just can't do it. But that's what we really need.
No, but I realize that with two kids going through the same grade, I was back and forth depending on, you know, he was in robotics, the other one's in basketball, you know, all dependent on what they did and I'm there figuring out, I mean, a bus wouldn't have helped me at all, so I can understand that it just doesn't work.
So I think what we have to do is make a decision as to, you know, whether or not this is, we want to continue to, to, uh-
Well, I don't want to just drop it tonight, but-
No, I don't mean tonight, but I mean, we could set a date.
Right.
Could set a date like the Fourth of January or something like that, like the end of it.
We do, so wasting a lot of room.
I would hurt you in that program Thanksgiving.
After Thanksgiving, would that be your recommendation?
Yeah, notice back out to parents to let them know it's going to be this-
Don't notify too many parents.
No, I know, all that's my thing. But it's just-
We'll have to cease and desist. And what would the date be? I don't have that in my calendar.
So long without one anyway.
Date would be the thirty of-
Last trip would be the forty-fourth or-
Actually, it will be December, it'll be December second.
Yeah, the last trip would be December twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth.
November.
Oh, November.
Last trip would be November.
Yeah, November. Is a school on the twenty-sixth?
There is, but again, that's right before vacation. I would make the last day the Friday before. Yeah, November twenty-second.
I say we, I motion that we cease and desist on November twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Second, twenty-second, I'll get it. I don't know, it seems like so weird.
So we do this Friday.
Okay, so basically what Mary's saying is the last bus, the last late bus run will be on November twenty-second. Will not run beyond that at all due to lack of use.
All right, so moved.
So moved. Moved and seconded that the late bus runs stop as of November twenty-second. Through the discussion? All in favor? Four and O. Okay, and our last thing is acceptance of the school's strategic plan and goals.
Can we have a vote on the vision separate? I think that's what we can also, right?
Well, no, I said that if, I asked you to do at least the vision, because you've seen that for the second time. The vision, we felt-
Oh, yeah, the vision, I thought we voted on that. Can you? We didn't vote on that.
No, so what I'm asking you to do is change the wording to accepting to acting school vision.
Okay, change that.
Yes, yes.
So you're saying the vision is done?
Right, yes, right.
That was the key to produce everything else, the vision replaced.
I will go back and look at that, but I don't believe in that. I feel like I've seen it.
Well, we talked about it a lot, so we probably-
Draft after draft, that's why you want to move on.
You can talk about that, of course.
Okay, so I will look now for a motion to accept the acting school vision as prescient.
So moved.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette. That the vision to be accepted as prescient. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Four and O. I will entertain now a motion going to executive session regarding personnel and contract Jeanette will. Motion by Jeanette.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Mary.
Mix it up.
Enter into executive session. Okay.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
We need a vote on that.
Oh, all in favor?